Okay, members, welcome to this special meeting of the Highland Council. Someone has their microphone on. Are you okay? So I'll start again. Welcome to this meeting, this special meeting of the Highland Council. This meeting will be filmed and broadcast on the internet and available for viewing for 12 months thereafter. Members in the chamber should keep their microphones and laptops to silent and those online should keep their microphones muted unless actually speaking in debate. A very special thank you to John Shepherd and the rest of the IT staff because without their assistance last night and this morning, we would not have any, some of the facilities of the chamber would not be working and they worked really hard to get this done. And apologies for the heat in here, it is far too warm and we need to do something about. So, item one on the agenda is the calling of the roll.
Thank you convenor and good afternoon, members. So, members, starting with those of you in the chamber, I should confirm your attendance by pressing the green button when, when the option appears before you, thank you.
Stuart, someone on coming on. Has everyone remembered the need to join the meeting?
Oh, yeah. Weird, okay, that's fixed it.
So if everybody in the chamber has voted, thank you, we'll close the vote down. Thank you, members. Okay, convenor, we have quite a number of members participating remotely and I'll run through the names of the members that I have taken a note of before we rock out. So councillor Bowdre.
Present.
Councillor Campbell.
Present.
Councillor Campbell Sinclair.
Present.
Councillor Collier.
Present.
Councillor Crawford.
Present.
Councillor Dundas.
Present.
Councillor Finlayson.
Present.
Councillor David Fraser.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Laurie Fraser.
Present.
Councillor Gale.
Here Stuart.
Councillor Gunn.
Present.
Stuart, I don't think you're hearing me or not.
Thank you councillor Gunn. Councillor Hutchison.
Present, thanks.
Councillor Mrs Jarvie.
Afternoon, present.
Councillor Johnson.
Present, thank you.
Councillor Loudon.
Present.
Councillor Mackay.
Present.
Councillor Isabel Mackenzie.
Present, thank you.
Councillor Mackie.
Good afternoon, I am present.
Councillor Ryan McIntosh.
Present.
Councillor Angela McLean. Councillor McGivry. Councillor Miller. Councillor, councillor Miller. Councillor Morrison.
Afternoon, present.
Councillor Nevin.
Oh, wait a minute. Present.
Councillor Rees.
Present, Stuart, thank you.
Councillor Rosie.
Good afternoon, everyone, present.
Councillor Willis.
Present.
And councillor McEwan, you're with us as well this afternoon.
Yes, present, thank you.
Thank you, members.
Stuart, it's councillor Coghill, present as well, thank you.
Members, any declarations of interest? No. Now move to item three on your agenda, this is notice of amendment Corrin Ferry Foot Passenger Fair, councillor Gowans.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to move the minutes of the Economic and Infrastructure Committee, the meeting on the 29th of May 2005, with the addition of Ian Brown to the list of those in attendance and with the exception of item seven, which is the Corrin Ferry Foot Passenger Fair, which is the subject of today's notice of amendment. Members, we are all aware of the challenges that the Corrin Ferry has faced in recent years, which is why we must replace the aging vessels. This council, which is all of you, have been very supportive of this and we understand the very real need to move forward. In that vein, we have managed to raise 70 million pounds, starting from zero. This includes the repurposing of 27 million pounds of government funding originally earmarked for projects in Inverness, now redirected to fund new vessels and infrastructure in the Corrin Narrows. A comprehensive report by StanTech was produced to justify this approach. It clearly outlines the socio-economic benefits and the risks and has been supported by high level discussions with both the convenor and the leader. So let's consider some of the facts. Around 270,000 passengers use the Corrin Ferry each year. A large proportion of those are tourists, most of whom travel by vehicle and a much smaller number on foot and by bicycle. Now, under the E&amp;I proposal, here's what it means in practice. Anyone under the age of 23 will still travel free. Anyone over 59 will still travel free. Anyone with a disability will still travel free. The only group that will be required to pay will be able-bodied individuals between the ages of 23 and 59. Everyone else is free. Member, councillor Baxter's original amendment to the E&amp;I proposed not implementing the charge and ending with the phrase 'at this time'. That phrase has now been removed from the amendment before you today. So I'd like to ask councillor Baxter in due course if you can clarify for members, when, if ever, do you believe that the charges should be introduced? Your amendment no longer qualifies that point. But let's reflect for a moment. One of the last times we debated foot passenger fares in this chamber was an amendment that proposed to introduce a one-pound fare. And had that passed, we would not be debating this today. But I can quote you the minutes from that meeting which took place in February 2019. And within these minutes, the amendment stated, "A flat charge of one pound per foot passenger should be introduced in order to offset the proposed 3% increase in vehicle fares." Members, that was proposed by, this one-pound foot passenger fare was proposed by councillor Andrew Baxter. Now let's move back to the present. The quarter-three revenue monitoring report that was presented at the E&amp;I committee in February forecasts an overspend of 1.3 million for the Corrin Ferry. That means that this service is already heavily subsidised by every council ward, yet councillor Baxter still expects the fares to be waived. Let's be clear, the Corrin Ferry is a vital part of our integrated transport infrastructure, just like buses, trains and other ferries, but no one expects to use these services for free. To put into context, the Glenelg Ferry charges three pounds for foot passengers, Cromartie Ferry five pounds, Sponsoring Rossi two pound fifty-five, Malague to Armadale three eighty-five. These communities are just as dependent on their ferries and they understand the need for fair charges. Even bus passengers pay two pounds forty for short distances. So this is about fairness and equality, sharing the costs of travel, generating much-needed income for this council. And in this case, much of the revenue will come from thousands of tourists that we welcome to the Highlands each year. So let's make the responsible choice for sustainability of the service and for the fairness to our Highland residents. Thank you very much.
Councillor Baxter.
Thank you convenor and I thank councillor Gowans for his opening comments. I'm sorry, colleagues, I'm sorry that you are here this afternoon when you would rather be out in your gardens or across your wards, but this is an issue that I have campaigned on since my first election in 2012, when the then administration introduced a fare increase across the board of 23%, in one year. I'm sorry for the confusion that the introduction of this policy has caused because officers told me before the budget meeting that they were introducing a three-pound fare that would raise 5,000 pounds a year. And when I raised that at the council, there was a look of bafflement from the administration front bench. And then just a few weeks later, at the E&amp;I committee, we are told that it will be a two-pound charge that will raise 20,000 pounds. And back in 2019, when indeed I did propose a one-pound charge to offset a 3% increase that year, officers told us it would raise 200,000 pounds at the time. I'm sorry to see that once again the front page of the Le Carver Times is dominated by the Corrin Ferry as well, but on this occasion, it focuses not on me but on the impact on residents and businesses. I'm sorry that Le Carver councillors were left in the dark about this proposal and that's despite me asking a question at area committee in January of officers, which was, "What are the plans for Corrin Ferry fares in this year's budget?". But above all, I am sorry for the peninsula communities that once again have been ignored and neglected and most importantly, without any consultation from this council administration. So let me focus on that lack of consultation. The communities, ahead of 2019, I worked with all of the community councils across the ward that were affected and there was broad agreement for the introduction of a one-pound charge. But there was also an appeal to this council and it has been repeated constantly that, "Please, sit down with us and review the whole Corrin Ferry fare structure because we believe that there can be a better, a more equal and a fairer way of charging on their ferry." I think we need to acknowledge the lack of clarity on passenger numbers, so ably demonstrated by councillor Logue at E&amp;I committee when he questioned officers about where their 10,000 foot passenger number came from and they couldn't tell us where it had. We should acknowledge the economic impact on local residents and local businesses, ably demonstrated by two businesses that will be most impacted by it in today's Le Carver Times. But for someone that crosses as a foot passenger from Ardgoire to Corrin to catch a bus to Fort William each day for work, it will cost them 960 pounds a year, which they were not paying before the introduction of this charge. And yes, I recognise that I supported a one-pound charge in the past, but times were different then. It was pre-COVID. It was pre the disaster of the Corrin Ferry and the Maid of Glencoe being unable to operate for months upon end, which had an impact on those businesses and the rider community. And it was before this council agreed to a 10% increase fares for all other passengers and journeys on the Corrin Ferry here in March. And that's why I sought to bring back this notice of amendment at this meeting. I look forward to hearing my fellow Le Carver councillors and their views. Councillor Kate Willis supported me vocally at the last committee meeting and made an alternative amendment and I will be interested to hear her thoughts on whether she wishes to amend my amendment further today. And convenor, can I just deal with the last thing that I forgot from councillor Gowans about 'not at this time'? I would be happy if the administration would accept it to add 'not at this time'.
Members, you know, please keep your mobile phones silent, it's rude and it's disruptive to the speaker, so please make the effort, turn your mobile phones off. Thank you. Councillor Willis.
Thank you convenor and thank you councillor Gowans for highlighting the work that's already been done to upgrade the Corrin Ferry and the shoreside infrastructure. I certainly appreciate all the work that has been done to find the funding and to progress the project and I thank everyone that's involved. As councillor Baxter has just mentioned, at the E&amp;I committee on the 29th of May, I proposed an alternative amendment and I will be proposing a revised alternative again today, which perhaps councillor Baxter may be able to accept. As a member in Ward 21 and the Le Carver area chair, I was deeply dismayed, frustrated, not to mention annoyed, that there was no consultation with Le Carver members about the proposed foot passenger fare before the paper came to the E&amp;I committee. If local members had been consulted, I think that at the very least, one of the recommendations we would have been making would have been that a wider review of fare structures and the ticketing system was needed, along with consultation, at a very minimum with us as the local elected members and with members of the Corrin Ferry steering group. I do appreciate that other forms of public transport are not free in Scotland or the UK, so why should the Corrin Ferry be an exception? However, at the moment, there is not enough information to understand the impacts of a foot passenger fare on passenger behaviour and business and on businesses in Ardgoire who are still recovering from the pandemic and the recent ferry outages. So before changes to the fare structure can be implemented, more accurate information is needed on how many non-paying passengers actually use the ferry and the reasons for their trips across the Narrows. Has there been a survey of foot and vehicle passengers to understand travel behaviours? For example, do we know if a foot passenger fare is introduced, will this stop people using the ferry to visit businesses on the Ardgoire side of the Narrows or will they use the ferry regardless? Will it make people more inclined to take their vehicle rather than walking or cycling onto the ferry? Encouraging active travel, which the current situation does, is a key objective of this council and the Corrin Ferry is an important link on the NCN 78, redirecting people off the busy and dangerous A82. The current fare proposal does not apply to vehicle passengers and drivers, should it? As part of a fare structure review, all passengers and vehicles need to be considered, including the concessions that are offered. It is also essential that the ticketing system is included in a review. A modern, upgraded ticketing system is needed to support proposed changes in the fare structure as well as vastly improving fare collection efficiency for ferry staff and passengers. It is essential that the current proposal is paused until the fare structure and the ticketing system have been reviewed. The review should include all passenger and vehicle fares, including concessionary fares. At a minimum, the review should also involve consultation with local members and members of the Corrin Ferry steering group. A report should then be brought to the October council meeting. So I'll put my amendment in the chat. So I've included, what I'm going to put in the chat includes councillor Baxter's amendment with my suggested amendment in italics. So councillor Balance is second of my chat, my amendment and I hope that councillor Baxter may be able to consider accepting my amendment. Thank you, I'll put this in the chat.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you. The biggest question that this has raised for me is why on earth has there never been a charge for foot passengers using the Corrin Ferry? I represent Clonan and Ardisir in the east of Inverness but was born and brought up in Glenelg on the west coast. We have a small ferry there, arguably the most picturesque in the universe, given that Glenelg is twinned with Mars. I'm very aware of the importance of the ferry to the local community, both in terms of the vital link to the Isle of Skye during summer months for locals in Glenelg, Arnisdale and indeed the very small settlement beyond Arnisdale called Corrin. And also as a very important tourist destination, the Glenelg Ferry is run as a community interest group and charges three pounds single and five pounds return for foot passengers. Since becoming elected, the Corrin Ferry has regularly broken down and I've watched all the local members passionately state their case for a new ferry. I do believe that the residents of Fort William and Ardmarican should have a regular and more importantly, a reliable ferry service. However, if my understanding is correct, foot passengers using the Corrin Ferry are the only customers in Highland for whom the public transport they are using is free. It is neither fair nor equitable. Members of the public throughout Highlands pay for their ferry, their train and bus journeys. If introducing this fee would cause hardship to any member of the public, they should be directed to our welfare team, who will ensure that they are receiving all financial entitlement that they are due. The city of Inverness consistently gets accused of getting everything and that the Highland Council can't see past city boundaries. But I and other elected members of the City of Inverness area committee wholeheartedly backed the reallocation of 27 million pounds allocated from the city region deal for the desperately needed upgrade of the Longman roundabout in Inverness to the Corrin Ferry. This was part of a 70 million pound infrastructure upgrade. We recognised that if we did not support this rural community, the problem of the ferry breaking down and bursting council budgets year on year would not go away. I do not think it is too much to ask that customers who are foot passengers using the ferry should pay two pounds or maybe, on reflection, we would have been better reallocating the 27 million pounds to councillor Biz Campbell for the upgrade of the Storm Ferry bypass.
Councillor Campbell.
Good afternoon, members. We are gathered here this afternoon at a cost to the council for Le Carver members to get a free crossing for foot passengers and wanting to reject a two-pound charge after getting a new Corrin Ferry costing 70 million pounds. Enough is enough. As I've told you before, I have the Storm Ferry bypass, which I've been for 25 years trying to get some funding to make it a safe route for Le Carver pupils to get to Ploton High School without being wiped, a whole generation of schoolchildren being wiped out with a disaster. Yet, Le Carver members are complaining about a two-pound charge. Let's put things into perspective here. I am all for share and share alike, but really, members, there's a limit in fairness. My local ferry, as Marvin told you, from over the hill where I live to the beautiful Isle of Skye is three pounds. I shall not be voting to lift this charge. Thank you, members.
Councillor Ross.
Thank you convenor. Well councillor Baxter, you surely know how to play to the gallery. In the press, you have many quotes over the years read of Corrin Ferry, repeating them would take far too long and my three minutes would be up. But as a taster, putting an extra four pound on a pint of beer, local pub owner income would be slashed by 30%, forcing him to lay off two members of staff. A few years ago, told it would raise tens of thousands of pounds with a pound charge, then told it would raise 5,000, concerned that there is no recognition of what reality is. In 2019, told by officers, 100,000, you said 200,000, I'm not sure you know which it was. Earlier this month, I was told we didn't know. These are just some of your comments, I can't go through them all. You are right councillor Baxter, confusion indeed does seem to reign, no sound facts to any of it, as when I looked at the various media reports over the years, there was quite a few conflicting and confusing figures mentioned, from numbers of passengers to anticipated income. So members, take all this with a pinch of salt. However, confusion is easily lifted. Once the two-pound fare is introduced, actual figures will be available, along with passenger numbers, which, incidentally, will include all those who are exempt from paying and trust me, there are quite a few of those, then and only then will there be a figure where projections for future years will be used more accurately. Now, what confuses me is why this call back to full council. Here we have a ferry which has cost the taxpayer circa 70 million or thereabouts and today we are asked to overturn a council decision and allow walk-on passengers to travel free of no charge, only ferry I know which does this. Madness and wrong on two counts. It went to a vote and the vote should stick. Are we going to find ourselves back in full council every time a decision does not suit some members? I have no political... I have no political agenda at all. And you can laugh, Mr Stewart, because you're one of the worst. Just the want to common sense to prevail. Surely every single councillor representing their wards in this chamber and online understands the basic needs for sustainability within their wards. This charge is well below the average fare. It alone will never cover operating costs, but it will contribute. Unlike a well-known supermarket tells us every little count. Look after the pennies and the pounds will look after themselves, folks. Heaven help me, I should be a bit like councillor McPherson over there. He's always reminding us to look after our pounds and be good stewards. Last week, you were looking for my support, councillor, um what's your name, Baxter, sorry, for the Corrin Ferry, and you were saying to me it was a lifeline. You have your lifeline. The ferry is there. And it's a great benefit to the Ardmerican Peninsula. I read an article written by Mary Ann Kennedy, Read the Corrin Ferry, and a very good article it was. It highlighted just how important the ferry was, and it saved residents a detour of forty-two miles. So not only is it a saving of mileage and time, but a huge saving on money from getting from A to B. I believe the ferry was out of commission for several weeks not long ago after the main of Glen Cole broke down and folks had to just deal with the situation, and they did admirably. Nobody is disputing the importance of the ferry. It was thanks to the administration that funds were found to get the Corrin Ferry. Perhaps giving praise to the administration might just be far too much to ask this chamber, but it's deserved. Finally, I am pleased for you, councillor Baxter, as investment for the Corrin Ferry was something you sought as a new councillor way back in twenty-twelve. Another one of your quotes, I picked that by the way. Okay, I live in the Tarbet Peninsula. We don't even have a public bus service. Yeah, well, I'm wanting a bus service for the Tarbet Peninsula. Thank you.
Members, at least try and be polite, you know, when when other members are speaking, you know. Councillor Stewart, you may think this is funny, but I think this is a really serious issue for for the people involved. So bursting out laughing in the middle of a member's speech, I don't think is appropriate. So, members, try and have a bit of decorum. You know, if if members are allowing you to speak, you should allow them to speak, even if you don't agree with them. Councillor Jarvie, you, of course, councillor Jarvie, have five minutes, not three minutes.
Thank you very much, convener. Um, I I worry that in the traditional ways we do things in this chamber where it's opposition versus administration, we we always force ourselves down black and white lines. And the debate so far today has been, is the charge good? Is the charge bad? Should we have it or should we not have it? And to me, that's not actually what the question here is. Um, you know, we we focus far too much time on you're trying to make the 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 right decision when it's actually, for me, it's make the decision right. We don't have two options. It's not good or bad. It's is this option here the best one and can we defend it? And I I always get a little bit disappointed when when members on both sides um downplay the concerns that local people feel. You know, we we have it very clear, local business is worried. That doesn't necessarily mean what they're worried about is true. It means they're worried. So when this council wants to make a change, to me, the onus is on us to make the case to businesses that there won't be an impact. Now, I I when I I would like to ask, is there any officers here who can tell us where the numbers came from in terms of estimating the foot passengers? Because I've been here eight years now and to me, it's not hypocrisy for councillor Baxter to have proposed it in the past and not want it now. To me, it's how wildly these numbers have swayed. You know, between five thousand pounds and two hundred thousand pounds income on the same charge in different years i- is is far, far too wide. So to me, I I actually want the right data to make the right decision that I can stand behind. And I can say to local businesses, if I could say, for example, we've we did a census over the busiest week in summer. These are how many people we estimate to be using it. We surveyed a couple of them and you know what? Ninety percent of them said, even with a two-pound charge, they'd still take the ferry. Now, if you can get that very simple short data, it would not take a lot of time at all. And take that to local business and just simply show, here's the data that shows if we charge this, there will be no impact. That removes worry and fear. Worry and fear is a natural human emotion to feel. It's whatever you feel when you're uncertain, when there's unanswered questions. People here aren't worried because they're wrong or they're right. They're worried because they don't know. And this council, what I've read in the paper, hasn't actually made that case yet. Because we we can't even say where these numbers come from. So I would, you know, uh, ask councillor Baxter to seriously consider councillor Willis's amendment. Because I actually think a pause to look at this and to get the right data, then make a decision is the way to go about it. Personally, I'm agnostic to should there be a charge or not. I want to know, will this have an adverse impact or not? And if the answer to that is yes, I won't support a charge. If the answer to that is no, there won't be an adverse impact, I'd happily back a charge. I think we we need to focus on actually what's the right question to ask here. So I would urge all members to put aside the, you know, the the black and white and is it good or is it bad? And actually, let's get the right data to make the right decision. But please, could some officer a- a- answer my question? Where have these numbers come from and how can we back them up?
Councillor McIntosh.
Thank you, convener. Um, I get your point of not being rude when other people are speaking, but can we um I don't know, can we hold that instruction until we're all rude about councillor Jarvie's new haircut? I'm sure it'll be wonderful once it's finished. The Corrin Ferry is uh like councillor Jarvie, I'm quite agnostic about this. I'm not sure. Maybe I'm turning into a libidam. I'm not quite sure which way I'm going. If you are going from across the ferry to go to to Fort William to work, it's quite different from going across to look at an eagle or as a tourist. If we had a bridge, there would not be a cost. We are forbidden by the Scottish government for charging tools on bridge. If you have a car, you have a choice. You can get the long way around to get to Fort William, or you can come across by ferry. That's a choice and you have a choice with that on whether you pay the fare or not. If you're on foot, you don't have a choice. You have to come across. If we were to get a bridge, I say again, there would be no choice. If you go across on the Glenel beautiful ferry, well, the ferry's not, but the trip is, uh, you're not going by foot. What on earth are you going to do once you get across there? Stand around until it comes back so you can go back over to Glenel and stand around there for a while. Um, it's quite different from a tourist ferry. This is a working piece of infrastructure. And we should see it as that. I personally think that there's nobody in the administration who would disagree with no fares at all, if it was possible. So I do have sympathies with the review. But I also have sympathies with people who are needing to use it to get to work or to get to appointments. They have no other choice but this ferry, as they have no other choice but to use a bridge. Um, and it's it's not what the charge is, whether it's two pound or ten pound, is immaterial. It's what is the correct thing to do. Uh, right now, I would probably support councillor Willis's amendment and get the information so we can make a proper decision based on proper data. Thank you.
Councillor Stewart.
Well, um, thank you, um, convener. I think what a lot of other members have said is very pertinent. This isn't about um picking sides, doing what's right and doing the decent thing by the communities affected. So let's first look at the the faction. The proposal's hard, we're going to turn a coin into the the coffers of this council. But it's going to make, um, as councillor guarantee, it's going to make or break the Corin Narrows. Well, it can't be both, and it's not going to generate a significant amount of of revenue. But what it is going to do is hurt a community that's already fragile. Now, I'd like to pick up on a couple of other points made by other members, and I'm actually at a loss, convener, as to discover whose contribution was the worst, councillor Ross or councillor Campbell. Because, you know, councillor Ross just read out absolute partisan gruel. Um, and what I fail to understand from the contributions of some members is why they almost take it back to, well, my ward doesn't have this, my ward has that, this happened to us. Things happen in all of our wards that we like and we don't like, but we shouldn't be taking that out on other communities. We should say, oh, well, we had to do this, so you're going to have to suffer as well. There's been decisions made in this chamber that affect every community negatively. Now, it doesn't mean that we need to make any more of them here today. You know, we heard about the the Strom Ferry bypass and how councillor Campbell has been ineffectively campaigning for twenty-five years for this. But let's be honest, what does that have to do with the Corrin Ferry? What does that have to do with a community that is desperate after being left without a ferry service for a hundred and forty-five days, not just a couple of weeks, um, to trivialise it as councillor Ross did? We need to listen to the almost eight hundred local voices that have signed the petition, signed the petition in this um paper as well, because they're the people that are affected by this, not the people sitting in here, not the people in ivory tyres in Glenarke Road. They're not affected by the decisions that are made here today. But it's the people that run the accommodation, people that run the pub, the people that commute to access education and economic opportunities. They're the ones, members, that are going to suffer because of decisions that we make today. So let me be absolutely clear what this decision will do. It will hurt business and it will hurt communities. It's going to put working people into poverty. Now, it's bad enough that this ferry has been mismanaged for so long, but this is madness and it's wrong. We cannot continue down this path. So if not listen to to myself, to councillor Baxter, to councillor Willis, listen to the community and do what's right. That's all this is. Now, I I I do have a lot of sympathy with councillor Willis, actually, you know, is it the right time? Is it not? It's definitely not the right time. It doesn't mean never. It just means not today. I think what we've got to do is look at how we can support this economically fragile, remote community. And then we can look at providing a better offering and maybe review the charge structure then, but it's definitely not the right time to do it. Um, thank you, convener. I'll be certainly voting against adding any additional charge.
Councillor McKeown.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, everybody that's um contributed to so far. I wasn't actually going to speak on this today, and I do hope councillor Baxter um accepts councillor Willis's amendment. But I've listened with a lot of interest and I've actually, um, I'm just coming back a few years when um the bridge went over in Skye and there was charges. And you remember the infamous Robbie the Pict? He might come out of retirement for this, though he might. Um, you'd never know. But going back to this, the Corrin Ferry, um, I I think we need to take the communities and the businesses with us. This should be consulted on this, and a pause would let this do. I don't know where the figures are coming out with, but one suggestion is it's going to be exempt for so many that the people on the island, the uh under twenty-three's and the the over the over fifty-nines. Why don't we just make it exempt for everybody in that postcode and charge the tourists? Even if we have to charge the tourists two pound fifty, you know, just to subsidise what we'd be losing from the public on the island. That is just a suggestion, and I think if it was paused and a consideration of the whole fare structure, um, that is something that could have been, could be thrown into the mix. Um, but there has been a petition signed by the community, we're meant to consult the community. We st- we stand for the community and then it's um, it would be fair and think that the councils that are listening to the communities have reposed this, reflected and went back to the beginning and start again. Thank you.
Councillor Cooper.
And I'll be suppo- uh, sorry, I'll be supporting Ke- Keith's amendment.
Councillor Coburn.
Thank you, uh, convener. Um, first of all, I would like to um thank my colleagues councillor Campbell, councillor Ross and councillor Reed for the how they contributed to this discussion today. My deepest concern, and councillor Campbell mentioned this, is the cost to the council. But my other major concern is I have this my second term as a councillor and I'm very um proud of the committees I work on and attend. We work across party uh in the strategic committees. And I feel that what is happening today is a disrespect to our strategic committees. I really do. And in that manner, it also is disrespectful of the officers that put in time to give us papers on strategic committees, and I think it is such a shame we are here today. I also feel that I, many of us, and I know in Ward Twenty, we are all very protective of our own area committees. Um, and I think that is right and proper. That is the is is the proper thing to do. But equally, we are all Highland councillors. We are local and Highland councillors, and I think um that has got to be reflected as well. Councillor Campbell mentioned the Strom Ferry bypass. I remember when I was first elected, going to a public meeting in um Locharren and looking at the routes and the plans for that. Not one thing has changed in the Strom Ferry bypass, and people laugh when we talk about it. But for that ward, it is a real, real issue. So I think we need to show a bit of respect regarding that as well. And I do agree with councillor Baxter today. It's a wee bit on election mode. Thank you.
Councillor Finney.
Thank you very much, convener. And before I start, I just have a plea to all members. Please do not set one Highland community against another. Uh, we all have our problems and water baptism is not going to solve uh this uh problem today. Uh, before I start, I just want to say that I'm very sad that we're here today talking again about the Corrin Ferry, when the news the last fifteen months has been so good, thanks to this administration. And again, I want to thank, thank from the bottom of my heart councillors Gowan's and councillor Bremner for finding sixty million pounds so that we can find a solution to what happened two years ago. To understand what we're talking about today, we need to do a bit of history. There's been a crossing across the Narrows for about five hundred years. And it's never been treated like a boat crossing, but like a like a causeway, pedestrian crossing, you know, it was mainly for the cattle. And in the nineteen thirties, uh, with the coming of motor cars, uh, the then Argyle council asked Jimmy McIntosh to to also add cars. And then that pedestrian uh element continued, but then money was made from cars. And this is exactly what happened when the then Highland, what is now Highland council took over in the nineteen seventies. And that pedestrian crossing has always been protected. You can move from one side of the the community to the other. Remember, Argyle is is not two communities. Argyle and Netherloch are the same community. And you can just walk across because uh of that pedestrian uh element. And life, life, the last fifty years, the last few hundred years, has been organised around that. And businesses, for example, are interlinked. Uh, for example, there is one at the moment providing bed on one side and you have breakfast on the other side. So if we suddenly pull the plug, it will have an impact. It will have an impact on businesses. Businesses, some of them, lost forty percent of their trade during the Corrin Ferry crisis in twenty twenty-three. So businesses will be again affected. The other day, there was a group of people coming back from a meal, nine of them, and I asked them, who would still go uh for a meal if there was a four-pound charged return? Oh, we wouldn't. Only one said maybe. So eight of them said, no way, we wouldn't go. So there will be an impact. Um, also, uh, it will cost people actually to, uh, there's a I've just heard of somebody who's just found a job, who lives on one side of the community and works now on the on the other side. That's going to cost that person eighty pounds a month suddenly just to walk to work. Imagine you live near Eden Court and you work at the hotel on the other side of the the River Ness. And all of a sudden, you've got to pay eighty pounds a month just to walk to work. So uh, the big thing is that I haven't found, I am probably the councillor in this room who knows the area best. And I've spoken to so many people, I haven't seen one person who's who's said to me, it's a good idea. And they all say one thing, we have not been consulted. Remember, we're only talking about twenty thousand. Remember, we're only talking about twenty thousand pounds, I don't even know if we're going to make that. There are other ways of raising money, and I would really strongly support an initiative that would include the merchandise, that would raise far more money than that, and get businesses involved. So that actually, we can actually raise more money and create a positive story, so that the trust we need between Highland Council and the communities is there as we move towards the new infrastructures and the new ferries. So I hope councillor Baxter and councillor Willis can agree on amalgamating their amendments, and I will support that because I do not support at the moment a charge on the passengers. This is probably the most difficult day for me in my time as a councillor, because we have the best administration we've ever had at Highland Council, and I have to say to my colleagues, sorry, I don't agree with you. But I'll stick to my integrity and represent my constituents, and I've got one last plea. Please do not use my constituents to play political games.
Councillor Edmondson.
Thank you, convener. I'm glad to see all these faces here. It makes me feel that perhaps people haven't made their minds up already. Thank you, thank you, convener. I did try to get a promise out of councillor Baxter if he would keep quiet about the Corrin Ferry for six months to try and sway the vote, but he couldn't give me that commitment. The thing that struck me when I was on the committee about this whole report, and before I come to that, I'd just like to pick up on some comments that councillor Jarvie made. I tend to agree with him, the crux of the matter here is we haven't had any community consultation. And it is, I'm afraid, very typical, the way the councils seem to do some of the things that they do. We need to speak to our communities, we've heard from various councillors from the area who are not supporting this charge, we must listen to these people and their fears and try and engage with them before we try, come to making decisions. And there's been a lot of talk about the impact assessment and how they tried to mitigate the process involved by not charging the fair to people. But that still leaves a wide range of people who are going to be affected by these. And as we've heard in the chamber today, those just at the start of their career or their work thing will be badly affected by these changes if they're trying to get to work each day. I went through the table a bit more thoroughly than I did for the E and I committee, and I can only apologise to the Chair of that committee that I wasn't completely prepped. I found actually that there was one return journey mark there, so discounting that, the fee that's being talked about is five pound a kilometre, okay? The average for that fee in that table is two pound a kilometre. That is two hundred and fifty percent, if my maths is correct, larger than the average of the items presented. Okay. I'm also not clear about the revenue here, and again, this comes back to councillor Jarvie's point and probably the amendment, that we really need to drill down a bit, sorry, I shouldn't use that phrase, we should really look at all the aspects of this. I can't understand for the life of me how that revenue, income is presented from that number of passengers, because even if you bank money, it costs money to bank. You cannot have a hundred percent return on a fare. So all that aside, I really would urge people to take stock and not introduce the two pound fee and support community engagement.
Councillor Christie.
Thank you, convener. I don't think this has been one of our better debates, unusually for council. You know, some of the personal attacks on councillor Baxter, the insinuations around it are regrettable from some of the independent councillors. I think we have to look at this in the wider sphere of things, don't we? You know, we make exemptions for people sixty plus and those with disability, and councillor Reed says, well, the rest can go to welfare team. Well, if somebody's on income support or universal credit, I don't think the welfare team's actually going to get them any additional money. If somebody is on the living wage, they're going to be paying an extra nine hundred and sixty pounds a year if they have to cross that area to go to work. The welfare benefits team are not going to get them any extra money because there's nothing for them to actually get. And I think we have to bear in mind, we talk about depopulation a lot in this chamber, and depopulation is about putting barriers and challenges up that don't need to be there. And this is one that doesn't need to be there. If it was a bridge, people wouldn't be paying. This is a very short journey across a very short piece of water. And if we're serious about tackling depopulation, we won't put up barriers to make it harder for people to live in a remote and rural area. We'll be doing stuff to actually help them. I'm glad we've got our priorities right, convener. So, so I think what we've got to do on this is do the right thing. And Sarah quite rightly says, pitting area of Highland against other, of course, that was the intention of the administration. Councillor Gowan's opened up with, within three minutes, he was on about money moving away from Inverness to go to Loch Arber, intended to try and generate some little confrontation. Others were saying subsidised by every other council ward. This is all designed in order to put conflict between areas, to get people to vote on some geographic basis rather than the correct or the right basis of something to do, and all for twenty thousand pounds. The comment about being disrespectful to officers, well, is this an officer-led council or something? Officers write reports, we make decisions, it's as simple as that, it's not disrespectful. No officer in my time has actually said, because you voted against my report, you're being disrespectful. You know, no officer has actually said that, that's just absolute gibberish of the first order to actually think that. What we've got to do today is do the right thing. We've got to make sure we protect an area that doesn't feel that they've been consulted fully, and we all know after Academy Street how this authority is on consultation, don't we? They don't feel they've been consulted. Whether that's right or wrong or not, that's a perception of a very important community within the Highland region, and we should be stepping back at that point and saying, let's actually do the consultation properly, let's get everyone talking about this, let's get some consensus around this and move forward. So the purpose of today's meeting is a chance to do the right thing, to sort out something that perhaps doesn't need to happen and something that we can put right today. And all the other conversations are really irrelevant to the people that are living the other side of that peninsula. And we should be doing what's right for them. And if you were a councillor for all that ward, you would be doing what's right for those people. And that's all that councillor Baxter and councillor Willis and councillor Fannin are actually asking for today, thank you.
Councillor Rees.
Thank you, Chair, afternoon, everybody. For me, I think probably in the ward furthest away from the Corrin Ferry, if we put ourselves in the public's shoes, they will find it fairly incomprehensible why our well-thought-of Highland council is reduced to arguing about such a small sum of money. But we are, however, it is, this is democracy at work. I, I agree with the leader of the opposition, this has nothing to do with being respectful or not respectful, it's about having a debate, a lawful debate. If we look at the actual report on this, the impact assessment's conclusion is that this measure will have a negative effect, paragraph four point three point three. Our own forecasts tell us that five percent plus depopulation for Loch Arber is predicted by two thousand and forty. That is a fact, and I also agree with the other speakers, I don't think we actually have enough information to be fully informed on this. One conclusion on why we are arguing about a small sum of money like this is simply that we are running out of money. And if that is a conclusion, the next question might be, why are we running out? Going back to the report, paragraph three point three, risk, which is always a good section. It says, communities may be resistant to any new fare, well, that's probably not a surprise. But I would add the risk, as Alistair Christie has just mentioned, I didn't know he was going to say this, of depopulation. We know for a fact that area is suffering from depopulation. I believe I'm correct in saying that tourism is our largest employer. And if we start to push people out of that peninsula, it's not going to help tourism. We need local residents right there at places like Ardgar and on Ardnamarken. The Scottish Government have a plan for addressing depopulation, it was written by a Highland MSP, well, she was the author of it, I should say. And I want to quote one section to it, and I'm talking here about what the public can understand or not. We have worked in deep partnership with policy teams across the Scottish Government and with the local government and third sectors and with community representatives to refine and develop this action plan, ensuring that it meets the needs expressed to us by communities. And given the petition that's already been mentioned, I think we can guess what the need of this community is. I cannot speculate too much about the perception of the public on the peninsula, I'll leave that to councillors Willis and Fanny and Baxter, who will know the area better than me. But I do think overall, actually, rather than arguing about fares on different ferries, it would be highly, highly symbolic and show that this council is serious about trying to do little things to reduce the depopulation. We should perhaps be aiming for all foot passengers on our ferries to actually be free. It would not cost a huge sum of money, but my goodness, it would be highly symbolic. It would show the administration are thinking on their feet and trying to help with the very limited money that we do have available. We could even lay on a special bus for councillor Ross as well. So please, let's be serious, if we can be, about trying to do little things to start reducing the stark depopulation statistics that are occurring in our remote areas by taking these small steps to improve the attractiveness of areas like Ardnamarken. I sometimes talk about the amber lights flashing in different parts of the remote areas, there's several in Caithness. The Strom Ferry has a light that's been flashing for a long time as well, councillor Campbell is right about it. But there is no money, that is the reality, and I do sympathise and I agree with her that the route at present is hazardous. But we're talking about the ferries or the lack of them at the moment, and I really urge people to just think about the slightly bigger picture and just doing one small thing to help people in what is one of our remotest areas. Thank you.
Councillor MacPherson.
Thank you, convener, and thank you for all the contributions. It was very good to hear from councillor Sarah Fanny, and I agreed with almost everything that you said, councillor Fanny, up until you said, it's the best administration this council's ever had. What I would like to ask members, if I'm allowed to, is if we could have a show of hands of how many people have ever crossed the Corrin Ferry. We're not having a show of hands, okay. It would have been interesting to see a show of hands, to see how many had actually ever crossed the Corrin Ferry and knew and sympathised with the people who live there. We've got to look back at where this all arose from. At the time, I commented on the other day, when we first discussed this, councillor Baxter put forward a suggestion, when there was no money left, the piggy bank was absolutely empty and there was no money left, and he suggested a one pound pedestrian charge. And at that time, the figure that I have ringing in my ears, and I can double check it, but I'm pretty confident, was four hundred thousand pound that was said. But from all the figures that we've had, there is a consistency of inconsistent figures. And, you know, I don't have confidence in this council's figures that have been produced. And our first and foremost job as elected members, and there are twelve hundred and twenty of us in Scotland and seventy four in this council, is to scrutinise the procedures and practices of each council. And how can you scrutinise them if the officers don't have confidence in the figures that they've got? We need accurate footfall and accurate information, because without that, we're going to make inaccurate decisions based on that. So to ask for a pause until we gather that information is quite sensible, in fact, it's more than quite sensible. So is it disrespectful of this council to not having accurate facts and figures to elected members? I think that's disrespectful before a balanced decision could be made. Don't set one word against another, disappointed to hear that. But this council and this environment, sorry, economy and infrastructure committee chaired by councillor Gowan's didn't have a contingency plan. The Corrin Ferry has two ferries, the MV Corrin, and its contingency plan was the Maid of Glencoe. And those of you who are present in the chamber will remember when councillor Thomas McLennan took us back to what was number one song in the hit parade in the charts when the Maid of Glencoe was launched, and that was ironically a song by Rod Stewart, We Are Sailing. And at that time, the communities on both sides of Loch Linni certainly weren't sailing. And we can belittle the fact that they've only had it, you know, for a few days or a few weeks. But the reality is, it was a hundred and forty five days they went without a ferry. That's almost twenty one weeks, and within that twenty one weeks were the sixteen busiest weeks of their summer season. And that's the only opportunity that people in the tourist trade, both sides of Loch Linni, have the opportunity to make hay when the sun shines, because you can't grow hay when the sun isn't shining. So it was a massive cost to them. And at the time, because we couldn't, we looked at various alternatives, and this council couldn't come up with good alternatives. And at that time, there was a mood sweeping this chamber, maybe we should help them. Could we discount their, could we give them a discounted council tax? Could we give them a reduction in business rates due to no ferry for their added costs? Where's that sentiment gone? Anyway, I don't have confidence in the figures, and for that reason, I would agree with, I thank you, and I was one of the signatories of this motion, I thank councillor Baxter for bringing it forward. And I thank councillor Kate Willis, a local member of Loch Arber, for bringing forward her amendment. And really, we're talking about potentially twenty thousand pound made for this council? Really, with all the costs, and we don't know how we'd set it up yet. It has been written up on the back of an envelope, and really, let's take pause for thought and let's look at it and examine it. So when you make your decision, you're making it fully informed with the facts, and we make a balanced decision, and we appreciate it. And it's disappointing to see we couldn't find out how many of you have actually travelled on the Corrin Ferry, thank you.
Councillor Willis.
Thank you, convener, do you want me to sum up?
Indeed, I do.
I will do, thank you. So I will be brief. It seems the recurring theme of this meeting has been that currently we don't have sufficient information to make a decision. Conflicting and confusing have been mentioned more than once. Hence the need for a pause and a review of the fair structure and the ticketing system so that we have sufficient information and facts to make a proper decision. I suggest that the review should include all passenger and vehicle fares, including concessionary fares. At a minimum, the review should involve consultation with local members and members of the Corrin Ferry steering group, and a report should then be brought to the October council meeting, thank you.
Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, convener, and thank you, members, for the debate today. First of all, may I thank my ward colleague councillor Willis for her very thoughtful contribution today and her amendment to my amendment. And thank you for giving me side of it before this meeting. And I have pleasure in accepting that amendment as part of mine. Thank you to councillor Jarvie, who summed it up by saying that this isn't a black and white issue, and he's absolutely right. But sometimes we have to be blunt to jolt council administrations that are into any response in this council. And if that means a notice of amendment from a strategic committee, it doesn't mean that we're showing them a disservice. Because after all, the SNP group have used notice of amendments in the past, and the first notice of amendment I ever signed as an independent councillor in two thousand and twelve was one by the SNP administration. I am sympathetic with councillor Ross's and Reed's points about the Glenelg and Cromoty Ferry. If councillor Ross wants to come along and say the Highland Council should subsidise the Cromoty Ferry more than it is at the moment, I would be delighted to support her and see the abolition of foot passenger fares on that ferry. Just as I would for those on her assay, which I visited yesterday, the residents there were demanding that Calmac gave them free foot passenger journeys. And I'm sympathetic always to councillor Campbell and have always supported a call. for a Strom Ferry bypass. Perhaps she needs to pick up the phone to the leader of the council and get him down to Bututhouse demanding that funding, but we're not asking the people of Westeros to then have to pay for it, because for a metre by metre, if we applied the same charge on the Corrin Ferry to the Strom Ferry bypass, we'd be paying £60 to go from one end of it to the other. And above all, I would like to thank my ward colleague councillor Fanny, who I think gave an excellent, and dare I say, a politically brave contribution today. It's not often that I agree politically with Sarah or with Kate, but it demonstrates that Loch Arber councillors are united on this issue, and I urge the administration, if you want to ignore me, I've come to expect it, of several administrations of all political flavours in this council, but at least listen to councillor Willis and councillor Fanny.
Alistair Gates.
Thank you, convener, and I'd like to thank everyone again for their contributions today. It's been an interesting debate. What I can say is that I think we need a sense of perspective here in this debate. I've heard some of the claims today have been outlandish, quite frankly. We're hearing figures bandied about that contradict each other. Some people are saying that if we introduce this fare, that we will adversely impact on the local community in Argour. But yet, we don't know how many tourists are actually using this route, you know? We don't know what the numbers are, and this is what we're being told. So, if that's the case, how can the opposition make this claim? We heard about bridges. If we had a bridge they could walk across, well, to be honest, they'd probably get the bus, what they would need to pay for, like everybody else. So, these are the sorts of nonsense, and what I'm concerned about is that certain councillors are likely to make this into a moral panic. This is not Armageddon, this is a £2 fare, of which the vast majority of people that use it are very likely to be tourists in our area, visitors to our area. I would guess that the vast majority of people using the ferry will be locals in cars if they're using it, they will not be foot passengers by and large. So, there's an awful lot of things. I think we need to get back to basics of this. This would be the only ferry in Scotland that would be free. The message, someone else made the point, forgive me because I can't remember who it was, but somebody made the point about, you know, if you get a ferry, you then have to get on a bus. But that's the same for almost every ferry in the world, you know, you have to use multiple modes of transport. It's no different to someone getting a bus in Inverness down to the station and getting a bus to Dingwall or wherever it happens to be. So, members, I would just urge you to actually think about all the rhetoric that you've heard today and actually get back to the basics. This is about a simple £2 charge, which will continue to be reviewed, a simple £2 charge to help fund the ferry that we have funded by £70 million, so we are absolutely committed to supporting the community in Argour, absolutely, 100%. And I think people recognise that, and I don't think the world's going to collapse if we introduce a £2 charge, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Andy, do you have Kate as your second?
Councillor Balance has agreed to second my amendment.
No, actually, Kate, you have, I suppose, co-joined your amendment with councillor Baxter, so what I'm asking is, councillor Baxter's amendment, including your changes, do you wish to second that?
I'll second if not.
No, I'm asking Kate Willis.
Yes, I'm happy to second a combined amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you, convener. So, members, we have a motion from councillor Gowan's, and that's seconded by councillor Green, and that's to move the decision of the E&amp;I committee. We have an amendment from councillor Baxter, seconded by councillor Willis, and that's within the chat facility. So, members in the chamber, when you come to the vote, if you wish to vote for the motion from councillor Gowan's, press the green button. If you wish to vote for the amendment from councillor Baxter, press the red button. If you wish to abstain, press the white button, and we'll start the voting in the chamber shortly.
Chair, could you read out the amendment for those that haven't got access to it, please, just so everyone's clear, and anybody watching online, so they're aware of it, please?
Thank you, councillor MacPherson. So, the amendment is in the following terms: not to proceed with the introduction of a foot passenger fare on the Corrin Ferry at this time, to pause and review with an investigation and review of the fare structure and ticketing system on the ferry to be reported to full council in October. So, for those members in the chamber, again, if you wish to vote for the motion from councillor Gowan's, it will be the red, sorry, it will be the green button. If you wish to vote for the amendment from councillor Baxter, it will be the red button, and if you wish to abstain, it will be the white button. So, just to be clear on my part, the motion is green, the amendment from councillor Baxter is red, and the abstention is white. Thank you. So, if everybody in the chamber has voted, we'll close the voting in the chamber, and then I'll go round those members participating remotely. You tell me if you wish to vote for the motion from councillor Gowan's, the amendment from councillor Baxter or to abstain, and I'll start with councillor Baldry.
Amendment.
Councillor Campbell?
Motion.
Councillor Campbell Sinclair?
Motion.
Councillor Cogle?
Amendment, please.
Councillor Collier?
Motion, please.
Councillor Crawford?
Councillor Willis's amendment, please.
Councillor Dundas?
Motion.
Councillor Finnison?
Motion.
Councillor David Fraser?
Motion.
Councillor Laurie Fraser? Councillor Gale?
Amendment.
Councillor Gunn?
Amendment, please.
Councillor Hutchison?
Motion, please.
Councillor Mrs Jarvie?
Councillor Willis's joint amendment, please. Thank you.
Councillor Johnson?
Councillor Gowan's motion, please.
Councillor Loudon?
Motion, please, Stuart.
Councillor Mackay?
Motion.
Councillor Isabel Mackenzie?
Amendment, please.
Councillor Mackie?
The Baxter-Willis amendment, please, Stuart.
Councillor Ryan McIntosh?
Amendment, please.
Councillor McEwen?
Amendment, please.
Councillor McGilvray? Councillor Miller?
Amendment, amendment, sorry, Stuart.
Councillor Miller?
Motion, Stuart. Motion, Stuart, please.
Councillor Morrison?
A motion, please.
Councillor Niven?
Motion, please.
Councillor Rees?
Amendment, please.
Councillor Rosey?
Motion, please.
And councillor Willis?
Amendment, please.
Thank you, members. Convener, there were 34 votes for the motion, there were 27 votes for the amendment, and there were no abstentions, so the motion is carried.
Members, thank you very much for your time today, and have a safe journey home.